Hey. The special October 5th meeting of the Sustainability Commission is now called to order. Tracy, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Chair Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Sure. The dog's here. I'm here.
Commissioner Don Barrett.
Here, I should know how to do that.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Sandra Garrett. Commissioner O'Konyas.
Present.
Commissioner Torrance.
Present.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So again, Roy, there are no public members of the public here, so there should be no public comment.
And we do have the minor thing of acceptance of the agenda, which was set out last Tuesday. If there are any, are there any comments on the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda has been accepted. And so we will move on then to the first item, the discussion of the five-year strategic planning properties, priorities, and I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thanks. So thanks for joining us on this special meeting day. What we wanted to do today is focus on priorities, and so this is really a start to the conversation around the strategic planning effort for the commission and more broadly, the sustainability master plan update. So this will, this is really the first time we're kind of launching into that discussion, and so more will follow on that front. In particular, we want to figure out ways to better integrate our sustainability plan with the general plan, as especially as it's being updated. So if we think about things in terms of timing, we would look at the general plan as a very long-term vision for the city, and we want to make sure that sustainability elements and priorities are incorporated into that as appropriate. And then a more short-term horizon of about five years is something that we would likely focus a strategic plan or sustainability master plan around. And then later on tonight, we're talk, we'll talk about kind of one-year priorities for city council to consider. So, so those are the three kind of things in it from a timing perspective. And so we are going to start with probably the most comprehensive piece right now, which is the assessment of the current sustainability master plan. And what we were hoping to do today is get a little feedback from all of you on the work that the sustainability or the strategic planning subgroup has been doing to assess the current plan, identify actions that need to carry forward, identify new actions, and identify things that might be able to go away or be deprioritized based on where we are and where we're going. The, as I mentioned in the email for our conversation, our next conversation with regard to the sustainability plan update, we really wanted to focus you on the bigger picture priority topic and also the objectives that are listed under there. And then we can do a lot more work on the specific actions associated with those objectives, but we wanted to at least get your feedback on the overall priorities and also the objectives listed. So well, we might be asking you to raise your hand or give a little thumbs up as we go through, nod your head to get some feedback on these things. So the, the planning group subcommittee, which was Roy and David Friedman and Randy and I went through the sustainability master planning document, identified things that probably need to change, and then that's the document that we shared with you all. So I'm, I'm asking Tracy to share that document on the screen for us as we go through our conversation, so we have that to look at. I am doing that for primarily because the last two meetings that I have hosted, my Zoom has crashed, and it seems to be associated with the sharing of documents. We thought we had a fix for it, but it crashed again today. So anyway, so we thought maybe by having Tracy share the document, then we might be able to get through it unscathed, so we'll see. All right, so and then at the end, after we're all done, what we wanted to do was to identify a few priorities for council to consider for the next year. And we need to do that tonight because they were actually due last Thursday, but since we had this meeting already planned, I thought we'd do it now. So it also will help to provide context to those priorities if we talk through all kind of all of the general possibilities. So I think, are there any questions about all that before we go go on Carl?
I just a point of clarity on the very first one, climate change. What, what do we mean by community resiliency? That's an undefined term.
So that is a good question, and I'm happy to come back to that question. Any other kind of general questions about the process this evening? Okay, all right, super. All right, so I am going to turn it over to kind of the topic leads for each of these as we go through them to provide just a little overview. And then we'll open it up for comments and questions like the car when the Carl raised. And then we'll kind of ask a few questions of you and then move on to the next one. So, so hopefully we'll try to move through fairly quickly, as I pointed out in the email. We've got about 10 minutes per topic, which isn't a lot of time, so it'll allow us enough time to say, yeah, that seems like it's still a good priority, or we have no idea what that means, so why would we prioritize that? So anyway, so those are the kinds of feedback that we're really looking for. And, and again, any kind of objectives that might feel might be missing. So, so with that, I will turn it over to the, to the first topic, which is climate climate change and resilience. And so David took that one, so I'll ask David to just introduce that one. And then we can open it up for questions, starting with the one that Carl asked. So David.
Just a second. Okay, there I am, and I'll be able to answer Carl's question. So this is an area where the state is moving the goalposts. And one of my major objectives in doing the update was to reflect the, the basically the move goalposts from the state. So a lot of what was in the 2016 plan is directionally correct, but having achieved at least partly those goals, and we saw that we met the 2020 goal, the state has sent a bunch of new ones. So the major change in this section was to simply update particularly the objectives to reflect the latest state goal, goal, goalpost, which is to keep getting updated. So if we just quickly go through first one GHG emissions, and that's what we've done, and want to sort of keep that up to date. Patrick, as you know, there is a request in to CARB so that they do this for every jurisdiction as opposed to making every single city and county do it on their own. Whether that happens, a whole nother story. But you know, for the moment, it's, it's the job of each city to do it. We saw the benefit of having it for 2020, and obviously the goal is to have that done periodically, every two years if possible. And then that is our benchmark and our guidepost for what we need to do. Because certainly we've seen for the climate action roadmap work that we can focus on the biggest, the biggest features, which are in particular, transportation is the big one, and then we have commercial, industrial, and residential. So that's sort of useful, not a huge change in that section. The second point, reduce community-wide contribution to G. That is once again, that's an update to reflect the new state. State goals for GHG reduction, carbon neutrality is already in the 2016 plan. And then the governor Newsom, the carbon-wide neutrality was set at 2045. And the summer governor Newsom sent a letter to the agency saying, oh, can we move that up to 2035? And then given what's happening in Orange County, you know, the question is, can we do better? Can we actually try to say, well, the state is sending 2035? Can Palm Springs be super ambitious and move it to 2030? That's a lot of work, but that's something that potentially can be signaled to council is, do we want to even be more aggressive than the state's goal? With state's goal is aggressive, do we even want to go beyond that?
Great. So Jake, you had a question about that?
Yeah, so my question is, with carbon neutrality, I am curious what or who manages sort of the offsetting and insetting requirements of that? Because obviously as a city, you know, you know, you've got basically sources and sinks. And so we clearly can't become carbon neutral without some external compensations. I'm curious, like this to me seems a lot more incumbent upon like, do we have a strategy that we want to reduce and remove a certain percentage within our own sort of full scope accounting before we then go into compensation? And maybe this is getting into the weeds, but it was just something that came up to me because to say you want to be carbon neutral and then how do you do that are two very different things? So I don't know if that's just a piece for, for all of you, or if there's actually some direction that we're getting from the city.
So I think that's something we would need to talk a lot more about because you're right, it does have a variety of meetings and methods for getting there. And I think that we would really have to think about what that means for us and you know, how we get our carbon emissions as low as we can and then figure out how to offset the rest. And so, so I think that's something that we could definitely work on as part of this strategy. And I think that could be something that we talked to council about when we perhaps present the climate action roadmap. That might be something you raise with them to say, here's, you know, here's an idea. It's something we not need to talk more about because certainly resources from the city would be needed to do that. So.
Right. Thank you. Um, I'll pause in case someone else has a comment, but I have a follow-up to something you just also said.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and then I'm gonna maybe address Carl's question about resilience.
Great. So you brought up the roadmap. And so to me, saying we're going to build a roadmap is one thing, but what actually goes on the roadmap? And how do we identify the potential reduction that can come from any individual action is quite another? Because that sort of ultimately becomes our internal player scorecard of how we sort of motivate and get resources and show city government and the individual players. So I'm curious, who is going to be helping us with, is this Placeworks? That would help us do the intervention modeling of said intervention scenarios to see like the potential reduction of any given action?
Yeah, so that is something that we have contracted with them to help us with. I don't know that we defined it as helping us with the roadmap, but we definitely had asked them to provide us with some additional support so that we could analyze potential actions and what those actions might result in. I think for the, for the meeting that we have with council at the end of the month, that it, there was a different idea for that roadmap at the beginning of time, whenever this topic came up. It was more of like an ideas of here's where we're, here's where we've been, and here's where we think we're going. But now that we have the results of the revised GHD emissions, it does provide us with a little more insight about here's where we think we need to focus our attention. So just as an example, one of the things that we talked this morning about on the Solar Green Building Subcommittee was the fact that about half of the residential emissions are from gas use and not, and about half are from electric. So, so clearly gas use, natural gas use is something that we need to think about and figure out how to address, otherwise we're never going to be able to make a dent in that. And so again, that gets into the conversation of council, do you want to go in the, in the direction of electrification for all future buildings, in which case that's a big deal and we can talk about that. So that's where we're at, and, and I think for a few things, we'll be able to tell them, you know, if we get, you know, 30% of the cars to be electric, then this is what that, that means for us. So by 2030, we can do that, we'll have, you know, 50, 50,000 tons of stuff that we can eliminate. But, but the idea was to get a little bit of initial feedback from them about how far they might want to go and then sort of explore the options and figure out what those, what those offsets look like. All right. So Carl, I think you had a question about resiliency, and that is something, I think, as it's noted here, it, it was about being able to adapt to the impacts of climate change primarily because it's in this, this topic area. And so that means things like increased energy efficiency to reduce power use so that we can avoid blackouts. It is improved insulation in homes so that they are more resilient to temperature changes. It is getting people off of the streets when it's really, really hot, including the most vulnerable workers. So there's a lot in terms of resiliency that we could talk about and climate adaptation. But, but anyway, so those things blur together a little bit. But in this context, I think a lot of it was around energy use and energy resiliency and that kind of thing. I think there's another one on, on climate adaptation.
Yeah, I mean, and that's also driven by the general plan update. I'm having a climate adaptation and mitigation, so this kind of aligns or is intended to align.
Yeah, and I can't remember, Tracy, can you go down? Is that one of our objectives under this one or is it come later?
Yeah, that's pretty much in that one.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's also covered in energy conservation and renewable energy.
Right.
The two of them are very closely related.
Right. And so Carl, just as a follow-on to that, the, the Placeworks is doing as part of the update to the general plan, an analysis of climate impacts. And so we will have some good set of data on what that means for us and what kinds of actions we might take around. All right, any other questions on this, this topic, either on the topic itself or on the objectives? And I want to make sure nobody's falling off my screen. Yeah, Sandra.
About going all-electric, I think our community and the valley here in particular, we've got a different set of emissions that are happening and if and when shipping from San Pedro on that opens up again, even without that type of shipping in that, the uptick in home deliveries and increase in delivery and shipping through this area, even with what looks like protections and some regulations for the big super warehouses. I think we have to sort of overcompensate for that. And why not be all-electric? Because we also have particle matter here. We're not smog. It's a very different type of situation than Los Angeles or along the coast. So I for one say, let's be as aggressive as possible. I don't think it's too aggressive. I think it's actually spot on considering what we're up against. So I say all-electric.
Jake.
Right. And all I would caution here is that one thing is about what we can control and what's within our sphere of influence. So while our desire to have all-electric vehicles is one thing, but logistics and its transformation into an electrified grid and distribution system is quite another. And so I think that this is where the roadmap and the intervention modeling that gives us a landscape analysis of like, what can we expect in the short term? What are these long-term targets? And so I think that perhaps any of the additional conversation around sort of the incremental actions could be reserved just for the roadmap work, that way we can kind of parse out and go through your, your list. Because I think that one comment could spur another and spur another, and this is something I do for a living. And it can, this in and of itself could be a three-hour conversation, just as I put a pin in it.
Yep.
But exciting.
Yeah, I will note that I just finished, got most of it or some of it, and I'll catch the rest of it. But as part of the IPR proceeding, integrated electric policy report, which the Energy Commission does every two years. Today's topic was grid-integrated buildings. So it's a huge, obviously, I agree with you entirely, Jake, the city has zero control about that. It's essentially the Energy Commission, the CPUC and, and CARB, but their state regulators have that really front, you know, you know, front burner to make sure that if we're electrifying things, there's both buildings and vehicles are integrated into the grid. And today's topic was building grid integration, and next week is vehicle grid integration. So we can't do anything about it, that's for the state. But, but on the other hand, the state is working on it, and so we can do what we can and, and hope the state has the, you know, makes the changes necessary in the grid to support that work. But, but Jake, you raised a very, very, you know, substantial issue of if we're adding more electricity uses, we have to make sure that the grid is updated to provide that electricity, and that's, you know, that's a big topic right now.
Sandra.
Oh, I, I just wanted to say, I wasn't talking about merely about people's vehicles, but about building commercial bill, you know, as far as residential hospitality. And then also, let's also really look at public transportation because that's another big, and we've got hydro cell buses here, so we're quite a role model in a lot of ways. But no, I think we have to look at, and, and obviously, no, we don't have that kind of control, and we can't just say this or that. But we can influence and we can lean in that direction, and I think that should be our preferences because of our particular circumstances here.
Jake, one more, and then we will wrap this up and move on.
That was old, I should lower my hand.
Okay, all right, no problem. So last question I wanted to ask on this, and again, I'm trying to move us through this a little bit quickly, but I think we all agree that this is an important thing, and we'll keep it on our radar and we'll continue to flush it out. What my question for you, and I'm going to ask this question every time we go through a topic, is if there's anything in particular in here that we think should be a priority for council in the next year? So, so is this something we would want to say, counsel, gosh, you really got to pay attention to this in the next year? So. Isn't that separate from what we're doing at the end of the meeting with our? No, I'm trying to sort of develop a list as we go. Okay, so yeah, so it's separate from the best list. Okay. Yeah. So.
Largely, Patrick, this is kind of the framework at this point that I made so that this is the framework for a whole bunch of other things. So my specific actions are taken care of, that are obviously GHG reduction-driven, but they're kind of dumped in the section on renewables and energy efficiency. So that's where I'll have specifics for, you know, approve ordinances on this, that, and the other thing, and give us direction on, do you want electrification? So we can deal with it there or here, but it's more, it's, it's more drilled down, at least for me, in that other section.
Okay, all right. So Randy.
Yeah, I just, um, back to your question about priorities for council. And, and to echo, I think what, what Jake had said, I think there's a ton of work that could go on here. But I do think that this would be a high priority for council in general, it, it, just the topic in general.
Okay, and Jake?
Thank you. And what I would say also, in addition to this particular category one, I think that the roadmap in it of itself is a high priority because I think that it can be used as a real strategic piece to garner resources, show spending, gain productivity, and also help us identify short and long-term actions. So starting earlier on that with a more detailed analysis of where we have levers in our footprint of what's within our control and sphere of influence as a city will really help us achieve these broader targets.
Okay, great. So I put climate action as a priority with the roadmap kind of highlighted there. So, so I'll track that, and so we'll come back to that at the end. So why don't we go ahead on to the next topic, which was economic, green economy, sustainable economy. So that was Roy.
So as I said in the introduction to this, this paragraph, there's been little activity on the actions in this, in this section in the last five years. There were 19 actions and five objectives. A lot of them could be referred to community and economic development. But the, the priority, this is a separate, separate section, we felt is low. But there are two actions that are listed there out of the current plan that we felt continued. One is 3.4, partner with hospitality industry to provide information to tourists about ecologically responsible travel to the region. So the, really the emphasis there is promoting ecological and ecologically responsible tourism. And then and the last one there that was listed is to continue to provide incentives and technical support to businesses in Palm Springs on sustainable business best practices, practices. And that's something we've got a good start on already with the sustainability scholarships. So these two are what remain from what was in the original sustainability, sustainable economy section.
So let's talk a little bit just about the priority itself. Do folks agree that this is kind of a lower priority and we could integrate these things elsewhere? Or do people feel like this is really critically important and we need to tackle this?
I'll speak up. I, I think it can be integrated into the roadmap, not as necessarily a strategic like on its own, but I think that it addresses the transportation, transportation component. I think it has a lot of other benefits to the community. But yeah, as a, so I think it's worthwhile for sure. And the only other comment I would have, and I don't know where the comments sit, but that if we could be less specific about walking and bicycle and just saying encouraging, you know, different modes of transportation so that we're not limiting ourselves to one particular mode. But otherwise, that's my set of comments there.
So those elements are important, but we don't necessarily need to have this as a separate entity. Sandra?
With, with that, I don't think it's the, the driving thing, but I do think it's sort of something we want to keep in mind as we make decisions because we're different than a city like Las Vegas, for example. So even though our air quality needs to be improved, if we really want to be encouraging outdoor activities, so the blue skies are deceptive with the small particle, and we've had no days under orange pollution since March. But I think to not focus on this and be encouraging, you know, the walking and the biking and that type of thing. And when you go into alternative, that's like bikes and scooters and electronic things, it's a different kind of vibe. And I think that we want to keep it, have a pedestrian element, bicycles, have that kind of attitude with it and not Las Vegas. It's a very different kind of desert city, and people come here for different reasons. And I think if you really want to go and, and party, then probably Vegas is where you want to go. So I think we want to be mindful about keeping this a natural kind of community where people come here for healing and outdoors and that type of thing, and not just to come and be and indulge. I think it's a different point of view.
Yeah, that's a great point. So, so kind of broadening that concept of place, really making sure that we have some sense of place and are supporting that, that sort of lifestyle that we think that we enjoy and people come here for. So. Okay. So, yeah, done.
Yeah, yeah. Apparently my hand is invisible. I, I agree with Roy's reasoning here that this is much, much of what would be here would be something that really isn't within the realm of sustainability, the committee, but with keeping these things that help normalize a, a proper perspective, since we're a tourist town, we need to really work on changing tourists and how they think about things going. So I agree with what's here and with keeping those as, those two somehow in the process.
Great. All right, anybody else?
Jake has his hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I would just add on to what everyone else is saying and sort of be more concrete about what I was suggesting about this layering into other things. I think that this is a type of action that would then make its way onto the roadmap that we're promoting a sustainable economy with ecotourism, therefore we could then identify tangible actions that would show us not only how are we showing the co-benefits of not only looking to reduce our GHGs, but it's by virtue of how we offer up our city as a place of education and healthy living, et cetera. So this is layering in. So this is layering in onto the roadmap.
All right, anybody else?
Patrick?
Yes.
Um, I just want to say that I do think that quality of life is very much uh, part of our committee's uh, responsibility. And um, it isn't something that we, it's it is something we should be very much involved with and and making those kind of directional shifts, uh, if not the decisions. And we are not just a tourist town. We need to get away from that and become more diverse economically. So we can be sustainable, but I think we need to stop that attitude of we're a tourist town and we exist for the out of towners and the snowbirds. That's not a way to run an economy and um, it's not Palm Springs, so.
So so this is, um, I think your comment, uh, Sandra highlights some of the challenge that we've had with this particular topic. Um, because um, I think there's been kind of a divergence of thought in terms of what it means. And so um, we believe that um, you you're right uh, that we do need to become a more diversified economy. Um, and I think what Roy was trying to point out is that um, that a lot of that happens through like economic development and through the IHUB and through the promotion of new businesses and things like that. Um, and so um, encouraging them to do that, I think is one thing. Having it as our own priority, I think is a different thing. Um, and so we haven't really had much energy around that in the past, uh, I think, which is why um, there's suggested to kind of eliminate it as a topic, but carry forward key elements. So.
I should note that when I talk about a tourist town, I'm actually thinking about the seasonals. Uh, and uh, who spend all their time, who spend a lot of time downtown. Uh, and they're they're, I think of them as tourists, even though they're here eight months.
You're a purist, Don. President, status. Okay, so again, I think we can continue to kind of talk about this a little bit. But but uh, I think generally it sounds like people want to carry forward with some of these ideas. Um, and uh, it's still a little bit fuzzy is to whether or not this carries forward as a a major priority for the group. So.
Oops.
Yep.
I think I I laughed. I didn't mean to laugh. I just, I also wanted to add just my thought to the bucket that I would agree that these are all important. But um, I want to prioritize this from a sustainability perspective. That some of the objectives could be pulled out and placed elsewhere or onto um, someone else's plate for their their priorities through a sustainability framework.
That's a good. All right, um, so uh, based on that, um, anything I should put on the board for us to kind of come back to as a as an immediate kind of action for council or immediate priority for council on this this area sustainable economy? All right. Okay, uh, let's go ahead on to community health and wellness. Um, so was this yours, Roy?
Yes. The original twenty sixteen plan, there were thirteen actions and three objectives. Um, many of the actions in. Many of the actions were never um, never even started. Um, but they are our our committee felt that the priority to keep this section is high because it uh, supports the climate adaptation actions under climate change and resilience. Um, and uh, as pointed out in the write up here, there may be opportunities to collaborate on health and wellness activities with the Palm Springs Parks and Recreation Commission and the Riverside County Department of Health. For example, if you look on the um, at item one point three, provide physical opportunities for people of all ages. Um, that's a good example of collaborating with Parks and Rec and Ribco Department of Public Health. Um, Parks and Recreation already has a lot of physical activities that can be counted toward that goal. And the Riv Riverside County Department of Public Health can provide support. They have a new office in in the city of Palm Springs. So so the point is that a lot of things that are going on can be counted toward this objective. They don't really have to be done and organized by the Office of Sustainability or the or the Commission. And I'm not going to go through um, all of the other things in the list there. Hopefully you've read it. But um, again, there's a lot of opportunity to collaborate with other organizations. For example, the um, um, just two point two. Um, there used to be a mayor's five K race. It hasn't happened in a number of years. There has been a sponsor of of a similar race in recent years. We could collaborate with that person to promote wellness activities.
So questions, comments about this topic?
And this really relates to the comment that was made before when we were talking about sustainable economy. This relates to the quality of life um, for residents and visitors in the city.
I don't know. You disappeared.
I had to open the window. Um, but doesn't this fit more succinctly with just Parks and Rec?
I I think a lot of the things do, yes.
But but it's really should be part of a sustainability plan if we're going to include wellness. But it doesn't need to be us to do all those things.
And you know, that's something that we could talk more about, I think, because I think there are several places in here where we identify key partners. And so um, we can identify a a goal or an objective and maybe assign it to somebody, but kind of track it or work with them to to figure out how it how to implement it. But um, but I think that point here and 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 I think it does get to Sandra's earlier comment about quality of life and lifestyle and and things like that. Um, and so um, uh, if we think that's a priority for us in terms of having a sustainable place to live, then we could keep it. But uh, but it's a good point that I think a lot of things in here could be um, kind of delegated.
And and one thing we'll talk about at the end is getting other departments more involved in sustainable activities. So this really fits in with that.
Jake and Sandra both have their hands raised as well.
Do they?
What a surprise. Um, so one thing I was gonna ask, um, just tactically, how would we measure an increase of five percent in twenty twenty to encourage lifelong recreational physical activity? Um, so that was just tactically, like when we're, what's the thought behind that?
And and that's a good question. Um, and we, one of the things that we need to do is to to do some more work on this. It's one thing to say that it is is an objective. But um, there's an organization that Patrick referred to me to that might be able to help with metrics. And also, um, I've contacted somebody at the Riverside County Department of Public Health to um, to see if they can help with that as well. So you know, the answer isn't complete. We don't know exactly how we do it, but the question is should it be there as an objective?
Right, okay. Thanks, Roy. Um, and before I turn over to Sandra, the other piece that I would say is that this ti- this category to me is what I would consider enabling objectives. Where if you're promoting a lifestyle in a community of healthy choices, et cetera, then subsequently, it will inevitably address some of the other issues in our um, climate strategy around, you know, if you're choosing to walk a mile versus drive your car a mile to run groceries. But if we promote these types of behaviors, then they will ultimately um, add to us achieving our overall objectives around climate action planning. So I think again, similar to the previous one around a sustainable economy, having a healthy lifestyle and a a population that lives here through partnership and encouraging these types of um, sort of this lifestyle and overall health status, I think will ultimately just benefit the overall strategy of our sustainability objectives for the city. Over you to Sandra.
Sandra, do you want to go next? And then uh, Don has his hand raised as well.
Just real real quick, and I think Roy kind of summed that up. But I do think that this has to be, this intangible sense of the sustainable living quality needs to be something that permeates everything that we do, all of our considerations. It's um, it's an intangible quality. And I think that's why when I started here, Vancouver was listed as the most sustainable city in all of North America with the highest quality of life perception. So that's something that is hard facts, but also an intangible uh, kind of a public relations type of thing that you have to treat delicately. Cause if it gets damaged, it's very difficult to bring that back uh, to the former levels of positive perception. So I think that and since we do have, according to the Valley Economic Development, not only growing younger families and full time families, but an absolutely aging population, which will continue, not just to age, but expand because of of people moving here full time. So we've got a lot of older people who may or may not be working and how to keep that quality of life where they're not going to be hibernating for six months of the year in the heat. Shade, outdoor activities, how do we uh, how do we allow that and encourage that? So I think, as I said, let's let that be something that that sort of flavors everything that we do.
Great.
Don?
Yep. Any other hands up? Cause I can't see them.
Don, and then it looks like Jake, but I don't know if that's your hand again, but Don, you're next.
Okay, and no, this is just a a more broad process question. Uh, it seems that there are things like what is in this section that should, there that are things that we should support, that City Council should support, but it's not clear that we should take on as a task. I guess is what I'm gonna say. Our task is to support those things, not to do anything uh, or not to create a whole new program or anything like that. So I'm, I think Roy has said something similar to that, uh, and some some of the others had. So that's, it's a process question to me into how all this all fits together.
Well, that is a great question, and I think there are other elements in here that are sort of that way as well. So uh, I think there are going to be a few things in here that come up that are supportive of other things that we wanted to um, or as Jake pointed out, enabling of other things. And so um, I I think we're gonna have to figure out how to organize that information appropriately. Um, because in my mind, we need to have a smaller number of like key priorities and actions. And then there are other things that we either defer or refer to others or are things that sort of underlie a lot of these other things that don't necessarily need to be their own priority, but but are supportive. Um, so so I think that's something we'll have to kind of tackle down the road as we as we kind of work through this and we start to lump things into different categories, then we can see how that falls out and figure out how to organize the information. So I did want to just, um, did it, anybody else have a hand up? Okay, I did just want to draw your attention. We did include here that um, the new smoking ordinance uh, potentially to bring to council that we're sort of working on right now. And then, of course, habitat protection efforts, which we do on an ongoing basis, but weren't really called out in the plan very, very clearly. So there are a couple of new things there. So let me sort of close out this discussion unless there's other questions um, with the question that I asked, which is anything in here that jumps out at you as something that we need to say, council, if you do nothing else, do this.
Encourage good health.
Encourage good health. All right.
Uh, I I don't think anything specific here for council. I I think as others have expressed and you, Patrick, have said that a lot of these could be incorporated, I think, in other areas. And um, although important, I don't think it's anything to elevate to council at this point.
Right, okay.
I I do have one thing. Pull out the five, pull out the five K race.
Pull it out?
Yeah.
Get rid of it?
Yeah, there's some of us with flat feet that don't run.
Okay.
But and there's lots of other reasons why people don't run.
Uh, we could, maybe we can adapt it or or morph it to something else, something else healthy. Okay, all right, great. Um.
Or Patrick?
Yeah, yeah, Sandra.
Real quick, um, um, a- as you know, we're not doing any trades for the foreseeable future just because of uh, public health things. But there are other activities that I think maybe we could kind of do that would get people out and about sort of like at the Fourth of July without, you know, creating some of the problems of the race. Also, the possibility, I don't know if anybody here is familiar with the cyclovia that's been all over and including in Los Angeles. I hope we have maybe somebody who actually worked on it, but it's a wonderful event. And that's something where there's spacing. It's a great event. It's family friendly.
What's it called?
Cyclovia. I think it started in South America first.
Colombia.
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, and it's just, I mean, in downtown LA, it was fabulously successful where they shut down the streets, but everybody came out. It was good for the vendors, every shopkeeper, hotels, everybody. It was a really, really good event.
Yeah, we we have talked to, um, uh, we did get a message from Brett Klein and um, uh, uh, Hawker, uh, what is his name?
Jeff Hawker.
Um, about uh, doing another psychedelic, which sounds like it's very similar to what you described. And so I think we're thinking about that maybe for Earth Day. And so um, I think you're right. I think there's some creative ways that we can think about uh, events. And and actually Jeff had approached me a while ago about reimagining that um, that health. It it's it morphed, the five K turned into a health and wellness day or health and wellness event or something like that. So so I think there's definitely stuff that we could do to to morph that idea.
I was just gonna, cyclovia was on my list. Actually, I was gonna say it later also. Uh, there is something else they're doing in LA now called Slow Streets, which I found very encouraging. Uh, and it's sort of similar to cyclovia done on a more intimate level.
Great, great.
Right, right, cool. All right, well, let's go ahead on to the next topic, livable neighborhoods.
This is another one that I had, and uh, this should be relatively short. Um, in the original twenty sixteen plan, there were twenty five actions and five objectives under livable neighborhoods. There's been little activity on the actions in this section. And many of the actions overlap with energy conservation and renewal energy and active and sustainable transportation. Um, it's a lot of wording about placemaking, which is a reinvention of of public spaces, but it's resource intensive. So the conclusion on this one is that the prior priority to keep it as a separate section is low and it could be deleted.
All right, Don, did you have a hand up?
I say, I agree, um, partly because we are uh, uh, having trouble defining neighborhood organizations anymore and finding ones that are active. They're not working as well as we had liked. So I think a neighborhood focus is a little bit problematic.
Couldn't it just basically layer into community health and wellness since we live in neighborhoods as a community?
And it it also, I think, speaks to much more the general plan in terms of community like design and and all that kind of stuff as well.
Right.
I think I think it's addressed elsewhere in a lot of places.
Right.
Placemaking was about.
Yeah, and I think that there it's sort of showing the connectivity between the sustainability plan and the general plan and that they need to be compatible with one another and that if they're building out a city plan with a future horizon and strategy, that it in essence sort of builds on the sustainability objectives of the community and what we're trying to achieve. So I think creating a sense of place and doing it and and like, but I agree the way that Roy had sort of parsed out that a lot of the different categories kind of fall into other categories within um, these, this plan.
I agree that that this one could probably be dumped and I I feel like three, four and five could be lumped under. There's lots of overlap um, among those three.
And I think that the point of what we're trying to do tonight is just to um, prioritize actions and objectives, eliminate those that really aren't feasible. Um, and there probably will be a lot of iterations of this document before it's final. A lot of comparison with the general plan and the the um, the climate action roadmap. So this isn't final, but it's a, it's a first cut at really what our priorities. So this isn't final, but it's a it's a first cut at really what our priorities should be.
Okay. Alright, so let's go ahead on to number five, which is active and sustainable transportation. I think this was mine. So. So this one really, this had a lot of things in it. And so what I was suggesting here is that number one. It's it's closely tied to GHD emissions reductions, a lot about clean transportation and alternative transportation. It's a lot about active transportation choices and shared transportation. So a lot of those things are. Could be framed in the term in terms of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions related to transportation. And so. Anyway, so I think that this is something to think about also in its relationship to the general plan circulation element. So a lot of these things would likely be addressed there to promote more of these concepts to make sure that our infrastructure was supportive of these types of things. So I definitely think that there are important things in here. And again, how it's organized, whether or not it stays here as its own separate topic, or. It becomes like a subtopic under the GHD reduction strategies. I think we can kind of figure out how to organize it, but I do think that. At least promoting clean transportation alternatives, which gets electric vehicles and other things, promoting active transportation. And also the the last objective, which is around shared transportation. Is it are things that we should kind of carry forward and figure out some activities. Related to those things because I think those are important. So any questions or comments about this one?
I would probably be up the. Shared transportation partner with Sunline. I think it can be broader than just individualized. I think that really should be. You know, should be sort of working glow closer with with Sunline. I'm sure. Mayor Lieutenant Middleton would appreciate that and also broader than that, you know, perhaps co-branding with Amtrak and the regional bus company or. City bus companies. I mean, Flix Bus has re, you know, they've substantially brought back most, if not all. Of their Los Angeles service and now is actually goes further than that. So we we actually are linked in a in a fairly dense. You know, inter-intercity regional bus network and you know. So I think that's something that that can be done and, you know, promotion with that. So I'd like to see a little bit more. On encouraging both local and regional, you know, public transportation options. Getting to Riverside is still not a possibility on public transportation, at least from Palm Springs. So that may be working with with Sunline to see what that can be done. You can do it on Flix Bus, but it takes you to UCR. Literally a parking lot in UCR, so you can't get to downtown. If you have a court appearance, if you had to go to the, you know, some anything deal with the county. You literally cannot get there from here. So that's something that I would like to see. And then anticipating your next question, I do think that we can work closely, as I mentioned this morning. Work closely on an ordinance on the EV chargers because I think there's there's can be done and that could be. That can be in the list of sort of, you know, next, you know, things to do in next year. I think that's that that's easy to do in there. As I mentioned this morning, lots of examples on that. So. We can sort of, you can park, forgive the pun, park that until we get to that next section. But that can be, if not one of the top two, that can be in those sort of to-do list for council on on that.
And and so back to Jake's earlier point about kind of. Trade off and assessing impacts and and of actions and that kind of thing. The. This, one of the topics that we wanted to really explore in depth with Placeworks is the transportation stuff. And really how these things impact our bottom line GHG emissions and the kinds of things that David was mentioning in terms of. Enhancing more shared regional transportation and train lines and bus lines and things like that. I think. It sounds like based on the way that those numbers are calculated, those kinds of things will really help us out. So. So I think those are, again, I think that's some of the stuff that we'll explore in a lot more depth with with some assistance there.
Don and then Sandra?
I agree with David and would just, I go into LA fairly often and try to use MetroLink and it's really painful, but it is possible. But what what I would like to see in this section is an example of where I think that we need to. Have a little more language about how we how we do something to influence the norms that people use. About transportation. We talk a lot about. How we change transportation, but we don't talk a lot about how we. Become something that increases the norm of it's okay to take Amtrak to go into LA, do it, it's fun. You know, and things like that. I think we need to be more specific about normalizing. Good behavior.
Great, that's a good point. Sandra.
Just real quickly with our local bus transportation. One very simple thing that we could do that would be an enormous improvement for service in the North End. Are the two bus stations that are across the street from one another up on Rosa Parks. Neither one has any shelter. There's no shade whatsoever. They're both in vacant lots, just dirt. There's no lighting at night. And that bus runs about every 40 minutes to an hour depending. So there is, you know, for a lot of people there, there is no alternative. But anywhere else in the city, you're going to find at least a modest bus shelter and.
Are those Sunline bus stops?
It's where the it's the one goes. Yeah, I guess it is, but it's city bus. And it's the North End Loop. So you have a lot of students there, elderly people, working people, but. You know, if you're there at night or you're a hospital worker or something, it's pitch dark and there is no shade of any kind. So I think that's a simple thing that would make a big difference for the people that do use that, you know, loop on the bus.
Alright, any other hands? Okay. Any thoughts in particular, things that council should pay attention to right now, like priority for council on this in this area?
So the only pressing thing are still the EV chargers and that's only going to increase as the months go on. More and more people will be switching to electric vehicles and will need more chargers. And I think we also need to look at other ways, like. It's one thing to say we want to promote other ways for people to get around. It's quite another to dedicate citywide infrastructure to promote that. And I think that, you know, we've got bike neckworts, they're not promote, they're not protected. So I think in line with what was said earlier around slow streets, which the concept is really to like. Slow the movement of traffic through neighborhoods, but also encouraging. Ways that you feel safe to do so. So I think that tied to the work that Jim and the the subcommittee on. Alternative transportation or whatever. I mean, I think it's called. Bikes right now, but we're encouraging it to be alternative modes of transportation. I think that's an area of focus because I think it's going to take a while. To have it take hold, but it'll reap major benefits in terms of our long-term strategy.
And one thing, Patrick, if you can hear me, that's not mentioned, but just thinking about it, I think. Construction on CV link through the wash is happening sometimes sooner rather than later. It is. Fully funded, so that can be part of, you know, promotion. That will be a quick link off-street link into downtown because it'll take you. Basically right to a kind of where the KFC is. I think that's where that where that is.
Yeah, that 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 will definitely be, I think, a focal point for some additional action or. Additional conversation around alternative forms of transportation. So.
Is there any word on Buzz Bus coming back now that?
Not yet. So we'll see. It might it might make it back in there. We'll see.
Was that the bus that did a loop around the city?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sandra, do you have another comment?
Um, just real quick of note, the city of Paris has now gone 100% into no cars and. Promoting bicycles extremely popular, apparently millions of Parisians are biking, causing other problems, but the good news is. The elimination of the and we're not as congested as a big city like Paris, but the problems remain the same, really. So I think that's a big, big step for a major city. So we should take note.
And bill in Metro while we're at it.
The problem in Paris is getting run over by bikes, but.
Right, right.
I would say I would say that that city, the council. I would like to hear them talk more and be more sort of forceful about getting Amtrak increased about. Bus service being changed, just just about transportation in general, not about. Things that they can't do anything about and they're not going to spend any money on, but getting those agencies. Providing force against them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And and Patrick, I would add just all the discussion around alternative modes of transportation, the. One of the new ones, the the red on piloting something like a bike share or as the presentation we heard from Bird on scooters. Would be something to elevate to to council.
I would second that, Randy, that micro mobility is really important because it's going to reduce those sort of one-off trips into our city center. For the dinners, etc. So however we get people to not congest our roads, drive downtown and. Get around safely and.
Okay. Um, you can't see my board, but I've captured those things. You have to trust me. Alright, so let's go on to the next one, urban forests and natural systems. So again, we haven't had much activity on this particular topic over the last several years. We did a tree inventory and that was really about. It on this front. We did have a few tree planting programs. And it was mostly about trees, but I I think that our suggestion was to reframe this section a bit in terms of habitat protection. To focus on protection of natural resources. Supporting partnerships with the organizations like we do with Seabag on the trail protection and and habitat protection on trails. And open space, right? So that's been a big thing. So I I I think the. Just here is to kind of de-emphasize the role of trees. Not that we don't like trees, but that, you know, this focus should be maybe more on habitat protection, which was again, not really covered. As extensively in the original version. And there's certainly been a lot going on in terms of protection and restoration of open space. And so we certainly are have had that as a priority to support. Moving forward, but again, it's not something that we necessarily do as a commission, but certainly some concepts that we can. Put forward or promote or support as they come up. So. So the one of the things we might want to discuss more is the kind of the focus of trees as shade. And, you know, this idea of drought and having maybe I. Carrying forward the idea of shade structures, maybe without the tree component. So anyway, so I I think. Again, just sort of preserving open space more broadly. Making sure that we are continuing our policy of planting two trees whenever one goes down. And again, of course, using drought tolerant species and then partnering with others to do this. So. So thoughts on on this item?
Don?
Yeah, I had, I I thought a lot of this really wasn't quite sustainability and it's more about working with other departments. I did think that that this could all be, my my notes from much earlier said that this could be collapsed in with community health. So that we don't have as many different topics. And I would like to see more focus on shade and walkable environments. We, I mean, we do have very walk, people do walk a lot. They walk a lot around Tocquelet's Creek. They walk a lot in Ruth Hardy Park, so we need to. We need to somehow encourage that further.
Carl and then Jake.
Planning Commission really does this. So as you probably know, we're we we being Desert Age Project. Is building six units of apartments on Sunrise and and the Soccino. One of their big things were shade trees along sunrise. Which is problematic for our design, but. They are really pushing that. Also, we're putting in a new. Community park slash dog park in the rear of the property and they wanted more trees and grass and shade. And so so my point is. Planning Commission is leading with the whole shade thing and trees.
Yeah, that's great to know. Who is next?
Jake.
I think Jake. Okay, thank you. So two things. One. This is a category where I feel like as a city, this is where we can boost up our sinks in terms of our like sources and sinks on our climate roadmap if we're investing in. Sequestered carbon and biomass and other shade structures and increasing habitat. And if we have a strategic way of doing that, where we're vegetating areas that may have otherwise been unvegetated. That I just wanted to flag that for us in case that wasn't otherwise obvious. And secondly, I feel like this is where it sort of brings in this concept of. Even different things that we're doing about improving sort of like the overall natural like environment. And so I think we've got another category around sort of like. Food and waste reduction, but even even as much as I think that when we look at. Natural climate solutions, when it comes to different practices around sustainable agriculture. It's not just around cover cropping and avoiding tilling and things like that, but habitat protection or. Repairian habitat, things like that are also part of this. I think you can bring in a layer of sort of. Promoting sustainable agriculture in partnership with Parks and Rec or whoever would be the domain to like actually preserve this habitat. But I also think it has a potential like sort of. Community component as well, either like not explicitly, but indirectly around community composting or education around just different ways that we can boost the natural environment. So this is sort of, again, an enabling aspect, but I think also. Boostering bolstering our natural climate solutions as a mechanism to enhance our sinks and our climate strategy.
Alex?
I was just going to say a lot of what Jake just said, so copy and paste that. For me, it seems like a priority for those reasons. Climate solutions and also can contribute to the our kind of well-being, livability components as well. And aligns with state, national, international priorities.
One other thing I was going to add to that was also, we focused a lot on GHG emissions and water quality and other things, but increasing biodiversity in our communities as well. And I think that. This goes without saying that this would be another sort of secondarily important attribute of promoting these types of behaviors and programs.
That, I think that's a great point and I like the way that those are framed. And I think the. One interesting question, which we do not have to answer tonight. Is I, when I think about or hear about the work that is going on with protection of open space with regard to trying to convert back. The Tocquelet's Creek area back to sort of a natural state. I do wonder in terms of habitat. Protection, promotion, enhancement, how? That changes the kind of urban. Wildlife interface, right? Wildland interface, right? So. You are bringing potentially more animals, more critters closer to where people are living. If you kind of expand that open space that's in the middle there. So so I think that's an interesting component to that and an interesting to think about, thing to think about as as we kind of go through this too, because I think there's. That's an important element to think about as you preserve more open space that is adjacent to or or near developed areas. So. Alright, any other comments on this section? Alright, any, my last question again. Anything you think here is is really critical to bring to council's attention? And again, we get two things to bring forward to them. So. Anything here that you think is super critical that they need to do in the next year on this topic? Alright. Okay, I think they're already doing things. I think a lot of that stuff is probably going to go forward in terms of the open space protection, but. Alright, so energy conservation and renewable energy. I will turn it back over to David for this one, which is kind of related to the first one we talked about.
Okay. Um, as you've, you know, seen in really every green, solar green building report, this is an area that I'm literally, you know, completely focused on. Um, this is the area where because the state has general GHG reductions because of state and local authority on buildings in particular, they are, and, and renewables, they are exceedingly a prescriptive, because while you can't, there are things that the state can do on transportation like EVs and, uh, but we can't stop trucks and cars from, you know, coming through on the 10 or the 5 from bordering states. But under the federal system, the California, the CPUC has authority over how much renewables go into our grid and what our buildings look like. So because the state has unique authority on these areas, this is where they literally have, these are thou shalls and, and thou really shoulds. But the state is laser focused on this. The three lead agencies are, this is what they're doing, um, with workshops, um, literally every day on these issues. And the other advantage in this area is what I've referred to as reach codes are local jurisdictions following state policy are very, very active in moving the dial with the encouragement and resources of the state. So there's just a lot of materials here. That the state has set and given us to work with. So this is an area where I've been very prescriptive and have been able to come up with some, you know, fairly detailed, uh, policy proposals that you've already seen. So I mean, I'll go quickly through it because a lot of it you, you've already seen. Obviously the state has set the goals. Um, we've got a whole bunch of stuff that we really can be doing and, and I'm working on that on buildings. The, the two key buckets are, um, existing buildings and new buildings. They are separate, but we can, you know, can focus on both of them. Uh, the proposal that I've written is existing residential, there will be proposals, cost effect and the studies uh, next year on commercial, on making more, the commercial buildings more energy efficient. So that can be done to support the state energy efficiency goal. And then there's this whole issue, Patrick, that we discussed this morning about, oh, what about things that people are building now? Um, and that's 1.1 is to say we're either all electric or, or more efficient. And this is where a whole bunch of cities and counties, um, are already moving the dial. So that's, that's an area that, you know, clearly been focused on, uh, got the downtown, which is a whole other story, but that, that can be moved. Et cetera. And then there's a lot of sort of generally, that's, so that's sort of the first objective. The second, which is mostly new. The second objective is, is, is a carryover, carry forward from the current plan, um, but it just updates it, um, to include, um, some other things. We've got an inland, right? Regional Energy Network that hopefully will happen in the next year or so. There's the state, um, renewable energy financing under the treasurer's department. Uh, obviously we have DCE and we can work with that. Um, uh, something that Jim had suggested, which is, um, you know, additional disclosures on time of sale about some people know exactly what, you know, what they're getting in terms of how energy efficient their buildings are. We haven't done that, but you know, that is something that's happening elsewhere in California and elsewhere. And, you know, also, you know, focus on what the city, you know, can be doing and that, that will be, um, assistance from the regional energy network there. Outdoor lighting is something that, you know, Rob, you know, was fighting for, and I continue to think that we need to, you know, do a serious review of our existing municipal code to make sure that we conform to state law, because I don't think we're doing that now. Um, and then you have the sort of the general state or, uh, regional portfolio standard. And obviously desert community energy has moved the dial there. But the cannabis slash large commercial building ordinance that I'm working on basically says you really, everybody would be moving over to renewable energy. It's, you know, 10 or so percent more, um, but that literally is, you know, you switch over and it's, it, 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 it's not hard to do. You may pay more for it, but you're saving the planet. So that in a, you know, that, that's, there's a lot going on here. But that's in a nutshell, some of the priorities that certainly that I'm focused on and things that we can bring in, you know, I think will be, Patrick, you'll be including at least some of those in the, um, in the action plan, because those are all ordinances that literally can happen in the next year. And I'm working very closely, you know, to get those to get that, that done.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add to, uh, what David said is this comes to an organizational question as well. There's a lot of overlap between this and, and maybe some of the other things we talked about, or these are maybe, uh, next level down for how we achieve some of those goals and in terms of climate action. So anyway, so I think there's an organizational question in terms of where these things end up or how they're organized. But, but I think these are, these are all uh, kind of examples of, of things that we could be doing or doing more of.
Yeah. I mean, they're all G, the oral GHG reduction driven, so you could put them under that. They're so, because this is so detailed, it may merit its own section, but that, that's purely organizational. But the point is that this is, you know, this is where the state's going and, and in the lead by example, this is where a lot of other cities and counties are going.
Yeah. And I actually did, uh, since you brought that up, uh, I think that the, uh, we'll see it later, but lead by example was a separate priority, but what we tried to do is kind of identify in, under certain things where we might take action as the city. I think we need to do more of that, but, uh, but anyway, that's kind of how we're going to reorganize that topic.
Yeah. And, 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 and that's, you know, something that we can, we can be doing.
Any questions or comments about this section?
Uh, I have a quick one, uh, only is that the, uh, the, uh, uh, outdoor lighting stuff. I don't think people see how that's focused, how that's related to things. And I think we need to justify that a little better. Uh, and I'm going to go feed my cat. I'm going to disappear.
Okay. Any other comments on this section? And again, I can't see the hand. So somebody has a hand raised. Okay. All right. So, um, you know, there's a lot of detail here, a lot of good things. And so, um, I think that this is definitely one that we'll continue to work through. And, uh, there's lots of things that are going on now that'll carry forward. So anything in particular here, uh, again, to bring to council's attention or to say, hey, um, council, in the next year, we need to do X.
Well, I mean, certainly all of the ordinances that I've got are timed to be effective. Particularly anything with the building should go into effect on January 123 to, um, align with the, uh, with the 2022 energy code. And because they need, um, energy commission approval, that really is front burner to get all those ordinances adopted. Sometime next year and, and cannabis also is not tied to the energy code, but you know, the way I've drafted it is clearly given how much energy those facilities could use, that's, uh, that, that's front burner. So, you know, uh, it leaves my priority is to get, you know, quite a few ordinances through council. You can put them all in one item. So I'm not monopolizing that, Patrick, that they basically you, you know, I'll let you word it however we are, but this is an area where I really think 2022 would, you know, we all work hard together and get a couple of consultants on board. You know, we can see a lot of legislation come through uh, in the next, uh, in the next 12 months.
All right. All right. Let's go ahead and move on. Water conservation and efficiency. And again, this is a David one. So David?
Okay. Um, this is more of a challenge because we don't have direct jurisdiction over water. Um, probably the biggest thing that we can do is to lead by example. Um, the airport garden is a, is, is a good start. There's more, you know, work planned for the airport when funds are available. We can do parks and golf courses. Um, and, um, everything else is probably just sort of working closely. With DWA, um, there is additional work being done by the ReachCo team that I'm working with. To beef up the water efficiency. So, uh, that's a potential legislation, Patrick, once again, that the cities, because that's in the building sort of code section, that's something that we could potentially do. I think the two things that the city can do are potentially, you know, reinforce both indoor and outdoor, um, building water efficiency in buildings. And lead by example. And then everything else is essentially partnering with, uh, with, with DWA. With, with DWA on, on that, you know, uh, the recycled water system, it was briefly discussed this morning at the DWA board meeting. That's a whole big issue. And, you know, we, we don't take the lead on that. So those are some of the things that we're focusing on. This is more of a challenge than energy, just because there's less of the city has direct control over. I would like to see a, a framework for, um, water efficiency audit, just as we've done for energy. And that's, you know, that, that's a research project with EWA. I, I continue to be frustrated of not being able to do what I want to do.
Don?
My cat. Uh, is there any, uh, I, I, I know this is absolutely impossible. Can we do anything about reseeding?
So, you know, it's funny you bring that up because we had a conversation about that internally this year. And I was this close, I think, to getting them not to recede this year. And so the, basically, just so you know, um, I think that this is not a fair, very common practice for places elsewhere, like for example, in Sedona. And so, um, this concept may be unfamiliar to people who come here from other places like Sedona. So, um, the the, also the seed prices have like doubled or tripled this year. So there's, there was a significant cost implication for doing that this year. But, and you pile that on top of drought concerns, and it just seems like the right thing not to do, right? So.
And add allergy to that.
Add allergy to that. Exactly. And so, um, I do think it, it will definitely be on the radar for next year. Um, I think this year it didn't quite make it, but, but I definitely think that that could be on our list of things to do in terms of leading by example. Uh, certainly the city could make a choice around that.
Yeah. Uh, there's one HOA that decided not to receive and DWA made a big, you know, fuss about how great that was, but you know.
Yeah, yeah. Who was it?
Uh, gives in my general neighborhood Canyon Palm, there's one of the ones in, in South Palm Springs in my general area. And there's a DWA press release, but.
That would be great to see because I think people need to see what that looks like and experience it and, and know that it's not so scary.
Well, if talk, it says Talklet's Golf is city property. You know, i- if they could provide a mo, and they're huge, they have two courses, they're huge. They could provide a model for the entire, the entire valley.
Right.
Uh, the grass is already dead and Talklet's, um, it, it works differently for golf courses. They use specific type of grass and greens. It's not the same as that we use in our private residences.
I think we have lots of others based on, we can work.
I think leading, you know, this is to me, the core of leading by example, because you won't necessarily go into, you know, city buildings all the time, but people drive by city parks. And that sends a message both for the residents, but also for our visitors. So I, I, I think that this is sort of core, working with EWA is great, but the city should, 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 should really take the lead on this stuff.
Okay. Uh, any other questions, comments about the water topic? All right. And, um, I'm going to confess, I think that Jake and Alex have gone dark on my screen, so I hope that they're still there, but I don't know if others.
Yes, they are.
Jake's still there. Okay.
I'm here.
All right. Cool. All right. There she is. All right. Um, I, I, I'm only asking this because I've had these problems with my Zoom, so I'm just want to make sure I'm not losing people or something. All right. So anything on this topic, we feel like council, pay attention to this, do something about this next year.
I mean, because of the drought and we're likely to see drought restrictions, I, I think once again, is what the city can do, but basically I, I think the core message is the city should anticipate and do stuff about reducing its own water usage. I, 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 once again, got like, you know, hundredth of an inch of rain last night, but we shouldn't expect rain to be coming and, um, it's going to be like a zero water allocation from the Department of Water Resources this year. There's just basically no water left in the state. So, you know, how that fits in in your list, but basically tell the city to reduce its water usage. We are, as far as I know, the single largest customer of DWA.
All right.
Jake has his hand up.
Okay. I just put it up in, in, in sort of in complimentary tone to what David was saying, that I also think that we should really be thinking about how we can encourage, um, fit for purpose water throughout the community. Cause I think that it's not just about reducing our consumption, but also recycling uses of water that don't need to be thrown down a storm drain and finding a way to upcycle water in the community. It'd be greatly beneficial.
Yeah. I mean, that's potentially an ordinance, although, um, that actually does go, I mean, doesn't Patrick, doesn't that go into the city and then, and then DWA? So isn't, isn't that actually is recycled? Or is that just?
Yeah, it goes from the city wastewater treatment plant. Over to DWA, yes.
But I think what Jake is saying also, when I, that's, you check with engineering, I think what goes into the storm drains, I'm not sure that that's recycled, but that's only when it rains. So that's, that's a, you know, that's a whole other topic. I'm not sure. I think that literally goes down the wash. When we have heavy rain enough for it to go into the storm drains.
Right.
Anything's, uh, that's piped to a building is, does go, is recycled.
Oh, I don't know that everything that goes to a building is recycled. Everything that comes out of our wastewater treatment plant, I think goes to.
Yeah, that's recycled, but that essentially, but, but, but I think what goes into the wastewater treatment plant is, is this, is this, is the sewage. So, so I think, so that, that partly is, that, that's captured.
Yeah. I think, I think this is a bigger, long-term infrastructure question because, um, like, um, DWA had that special session on gray water and, uh, piping for gray water, and it's not in the right places to meet the right needs. And yeah, so I think there's a huge thing that could happen on that front. Um, I mean, we could promote more green building type of techniques for, uh, homes or multifamily where recycling some of their shower water.
Yeah.
At on-site, things like that. I think we could easily promote.
Yeah. And, and that can be, that, that's part of the reach code. So, you know, I, I'm not sure, whatever you are, there are ordinance that we're working on, um, but that research material does exist.
Right.
Yep. That's, those are more of what I was talking about was less keep doing what they're already doing and also encourage it at the residential and community level.
Right. Um, next topic is solid waste and recycling. So, um, this, uh, topic, um, is still very much priority. In fact, when I was hired, they said it was the highest priority, um, for the city. And so we still have our goals to, um, reduce our, uh, amount of material that goes to a landfill. Those are still valid goals. I think we're at about 50% or so, um, along that target of 90%. Um, and it really depends on how you calculate that number, but, um, but I think we're probably about 50%. The thing that sort of has, uh, changed the focus of this particular topic and will have a great influence on future actions is SB 1383, which we've talked about it at, in the past meetings. Um, but this is certainly something that we're spending a lot of time on right now in terms of revamping the services to residents and to rethinking how, um, uh, we can comply with that new, those new state requirements. Um, and so I think that that is certainly. And so I think that that is certainly one of the big things that's in here and it is sort of a subset of. Kind of reducing the amount of material that goes to landfill. But again, it's, it's one of the key mechanisms that we will have to do that. I think the other thing that. That I have seen before, and I know happened in the past, was like a fruit cleaning program. I think that is, I've gotten questions about that, and I think that would go a long way to helping. Kind of both address kind of food, food shortage issues, food. Kind of food desert issues and also. Making sure that that stuff stays, stays out of landfill because they don't want a lot of it in the green bin, so. And then implementing the foodware ordinance is related to waste reduction. So again, that's a huge thing that's on our plate this next year. And then other topics like that are more longer term to think about that are happening in other. Places are things like the promoting extended producer responsibility. For packaging and other materials, this is probably going to happen more at the state level, but I think there's stuff that we can do here locally. To do more of this as well. Like as an example, we've had a lot of questions lately about what people do with their shopping bags. Like they think that they should still be able to take those back to the grocery stores and the grocery store should recycle them. Well. That has all really stopped, so none of the grocery stores do that anymore. And so again, I think working with places that generate a lot of potential waste material. And figuring out if there are things that we can do to kind of make them more responsible, I think is certainly something to be on our radar for the future. And I, I think that's, those are the big things I wanted to highlight there. So any questions about this particular item?
Okay. Couple, just a couple of things, all relatively small. On the proposal to rename this waste minimization and materials management. That would be what it does, but I think we need to somehow keep the word somewhat like recycling, so that the general population will know what you're talking about. It, it somehow just, just in there. I think that the issue, this came up to me the other day when we were talking about organic waste. I think that if we start talking about what you mentioned, organic waste as being an increase in the resulting in. A problem with the methane from the landfills. I think if we were public about that, people might actually be a little bit more concerned about why they need to separate those things. I don't think we. We give them enough reason as to why to separate them. And then third, there is something, I was surprised to get this and from Ralph's. There's something now called terror cycle that Ralph participates in where if you take all your plastic bags that were from Ralph's products. And you, you can gather them together and mail them to terror cycle and they'll be recycled. It's a, I'd never heard of this.
That's it. Great. Roy. You're muted. You're on mute, Roy.
Sorry. Just wanted to add onto the comment from Don about the plastic bags. I think. We had a category of special, specialty recycling, like the batteries where, where there's a separate recycling stream that we utilize. People are frustrated, have been frustrated about batteries. That's been a success. I'm very frustrated with plastic bags because I have a pile of them in my garage. So, and there may be other things I know that had been a suggestion in the past about recycling. Water filters from refrigerators. Perhaps we could just broaden that category.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. I think that we could probably do more with city programs to help facilitate that.
Carl and then Jake.
Did I miss fruit cleaning? I don't remember that discussion.
I mentioned that when we were going through the priorities. Are you asking what that is?
Yeah.
So that's when you have a fruit tree in your yard and you've got tons of fruit on it and you have no idea what to do with it.
Right.
So we would have a program of volunteers that would go around and collect that up and take it to the right place. Or give you the resources to do that yourself.
Okay.
And this would be especially good for HOAs, multifamily complexes, places that have a lot of trees, but not a lot of people to eat the fruit, so. A lot with, with community property kind of stuff. All right, Jake.
That's a great idea. That's not why I raised my hand. I was going to weigh in on. Instead of just saying implement the foodware ordinance, is there a way for us to be more actively promoting circularity of takeaway? So like, I know there's different pilots that exist where you can have, you know. You might pay into a one-time fee for a recycled container that then like a stainless steel or whatnot. And if we could like promote sort of like different innovative programs around circularity for the, particularly the restaurant business. Cause I think that would ultimately do two things. One, obviously with the reduced reuse recycle, we want to implement the foodware ordinance for those materials that do end up in this. In the, the, the waste stream, but also promoting the use of these more reusable. Containers to take away the packaging need altogether.
Yeah, so that is actually a good point. I didn't mention that in here, but we do have an RFP that's almost ready to go for reuse pilot. That is exactly that, so.
Awesome.
All right. Any other questions, comments on this topic? Okay, so again, question for you in terms of relaying information to council. What do you think? Is there something in here that should be a super high priority for them to do something about in the next year? I know I have something, but.
Jake, is your hand still raised?
No, I re-raised it.
Okay.
2.1, fully implement SB 1383.
You got it.
All hands on deck.
Right.
Ditto.
Okay, anything else there? All right, let's go on. We just got a couple more, so I think we'll probably be maybe about the 7:15, 7:30 mark. For our stop time, but food and urban agriculture is the next one. Roy, was this yours or was this mine?
It was mine.
Okay.
Um, this is one that in the original plan, I had 20 actions and three object, object, objectives. But like others that we've discussed previously, there's been little activity on the actions in this section. There's a lot of variety. Many of the actions there are resource intensive. The one thing that kind of fell out that probably should be kept is relating to. Community gardens and perhaps an action could be to determine how to get parks and recreation to pre- prioritize. Getting a new community garden on the north end of the city. So that, that's something that, that could be kept. I think everything else in that section probably can be deleted. And. Working with Parks and Recreation kind of falls into our lead by example approach.
All right, questions, comments about that?
Jake.
Yeah, sorry, just that it promotes also our sinks around sustainable agriculture. So I think that. I think it just sort of. I guess the broader question is, does perhaps we just put this in the purview of Parks and Recs through a partnership such that we encourage them to do these things? But we don't necessarily take them on ourselves, but I think that back to my original comment about sources and sinks, natural climate solutions and herb agriculture. And promoting sustainable agriculture through demonstration projects, whatnot, would be a great way for us to also not only. Beef up our sinks, but also promote these types of practices throughout the community.
And I was heartened to see that in that big plan for the Whitewater Park that was on the north end, they did have a big community garden space there for that. So, so I think they're thinking about these things, but I think you're right. It's a good thing to keep on their radar and help them. Carry through. All right, anything else on this one? All right, anything priority for the council? All right, so the last item was really lead by example. And I, I think this was again, yours, Roy. Again, I mentioned that we would try to integrate this into the various. Actions or priorities that we've identified already, so I don't know that it needs to be its own separate thing. But Roy, you can mention what's here.
Basically, lead by example is the city organizations taking on sustainability issues and. I think Patrick has just said that the idea of leading by example has been integrated across the identified goals. Most of the. Most of the sections in this document that we're looking at tonight do have something about lead, lead by example. And. The recommendation is that this really doesn't need to be kept as a separate section and it's also. More of a way of doing business than, you know, specific measurable. Actions. The, the main part of the section that I put in. Is that there were four actions that are listed under embeds. Under the objective of embedding sustainable principles and practices into city operations. Those actions are listed there, 1.1, 1.2, 1.6, 1.7. The point there is basically those, those can give us an idea of how we might more formally. Involve other organizations and departments in the city into sustainability activities. And there is one. My relatively minor. Action that is listed at the bottom of the page. It's maintain a single city sustainability website as a resource for the community. That's ongoing. What we have has been improved continuously. It's very good and. It probably doesn't need to be in a section like lead by example, but can be fit elsewhere in the sustainability plan.
All right, any questions about that one? I think that one's pretty straightforward.
All I would offer is that I think that this is a great way to kind of underpin the cross collaboration amongst all the city departments as a. An effective strategy to accomplish what we want to accomplish, things that might not fall within squarely. Our area or domain or action area, but recognizing that by leading by example, we're also encouraging this type of same level of accountability with. Other divisions and departments within the city.
Don.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I would, I think Roy and I fall in the same direction on this. The website is wonderful. I think that's the best way to do it. But the world runs on social media, so we probably should have a solid, constant, sustainable presence on social media.
And for those of you that do not know, we do have a Facebook page called Healthy Planet, Healthy You, which Tracy has been diligently. Working since she's gotten here. She does lovely things that 182 people see, so, so feel free to pass that along to the groups that you're involved.
I'm glad to hear that, but we need to increase those numbers. Yes.
I think I'm one of 182, because I'm always like one of the first to like everything. So Tracy, thank you very much.
It's, it's David and then it's Dan. On the likes. Sandra, you have your hand raised?
Go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, I really don't think this is the time to be putting our eggs in the Facebook, social media. I really think the way for any business, you know, commercial or, you know, government or community is to develop your own website. You control it. We do not need this anymore, so I really have to say, let's not be pursuing social media. It's time has come and gone and we don't want to be part of that. And our data should not be in their hands. That's all I have.
I refuse to look at social media, even though I said we should do more social.
Nice.
Develop our website, you know, but it's, you know, for the Palm Springs, the city one, it's, it's a fabulous website. It's really comprehensive. So I think just develop what we have and extend that, but we don't need those others.
I would disagree completely on that and we do need them because that's where. Younger people live.
I think.
On their social media, period.
I think that's changing and changing very quickly. So again.
You haven't spoken to the young kids, I know.
I meant, I mean, there, this, this disruption yesterday had put them all in a flurry, so I do too, but. I'm just saying, let's not look backwards, let's look forward because they are not the future. They are the past and they are part of the problem, not part of the solution. So e-commerce and extension through websites, absolutely, but social media, no.
Jake?
Do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, thank you. I would, I really like this concept of publish, like publicizing. Once we get a roadmap and we understand what our KPIs are, that we publicly share what our progress is. Cause I think that's the best way to not only encourage behavior amongst our community, but also create. A sense of camaraderie within the neighboring communities and counties. So that's another great way to lead by example, by showing like, hey, where do we stand and how are we doing? And if we're not doing great, how do we do better?
Yeah, that's a great point. I think one of my favorite things in green building projects was when they used to incorporate. Like digital evidence of energy savings and water savings and things like that, that were super visible and, and people could point to to say, hey, we're doing that. So. It's a good point. All right, so we'll continue to work on that and figure out ways to lead by example and, and I think there's a sort of an operational fit element to this of how, how do we go about this? Especially internally at the city, so. So we'll work on framing that out. The one thing that I did want to mention is that one of the things that seems to be kind of missing from all of this is. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a priority, but it's, it's more of a, like a way of doing business is the education and outreach events that we work so hard on. So. Things like World Environment Day, the Sustainable Film Festival, the Library Summer Reading Program. So there's lots of things that happen. To kind of educate, to, to reach out to folks, to let them know what we're doing. That, that doesn't necessarily appear in this, this sort of a plan, but I think it deserves mention in some form or fashion. So. So that's something that I thought that as we went through this is something that probably deserves some sort of a shout out in terms of what we do and how we do it. And I know Jennifer wanted to make sure that we expressed her priority is, is certainly a focus there and thinks that that's really super important. So. I agree with that.
Is that something that you could, that we could put in leading by example?
Yeah, we could put it under leading by example. We could create a diff, a little other section in terms of outreach and engagement. And so, so yeah, so we can, we can kind of figure out where it fits best, but, but either, either there or elsewhere.
Right. No, that's a great point, and I think it's an important attribute to all of this. The only reason why I mentioned like layering it into another category, because it felt like we were trying to get rid of some of the categories. And so then like. Why remove one and then add a new one as opposed to how do we find complementary co-benefits of what that does? Cause like you said, like it promotes our message, it encourages like community partnership and community and building and all of that, so. That's all I was thinking.
Yeah, and I think there's probably, what I have. Done in the past in some plans is, you know, you have three or four priorities and then you have like. Implementation elements or some other sorts of things that get at some of these other elements that are cross cutting. And, and are ways to, you know, engage and that kind of thing. So, so I think there's a couple of differences.
Right, like identifying more of the qualitative and then the quantitative attributes of our plan.
Right, yeah, that's a great one. All right, so we have reached the end of our initial part of our project and we've started to do the second part of our project. So if you can hang. So if you can hang with me for like another 15 minutes, I think we'll get through the, the, the last part. So Tracy, do you want to pull up that, that document that we're supposed to fill out as of last?
The one to go to council, correct?
Yes, yes, that's what.
Okay. Now. Can everybody see it?
Nope.
Oh, because I opened a second document, Patrick.
Right. You need to switch.
So I'm going to stop sharing, but then reshare. How about that?
Yes, that's what you do.
Now, can you see the document?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can.
Great.
Good.
So this is hilarious. All right. So we went through all this effort to not make my Zoom crash and it just crashed.
Yours crashed?
So I cannot see your screen. I cannot see anything. So this is what I, so this is what I'm gonna do.
Do you want to come to my office?
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm actually gonna, I'm just gonna talk through it. I'm gonna pull it up on my screen. Actually, I'm not going to do that either because my computer just does not work right now.
There's only two questions.
I am going to go down to Tracy's office and I'll talk from there. All right. One moment, please.
I think someone might need a new computer.
Sounds like it.
Yes.
I was having the problems that he was having, but I, the solution I found on my computers. He's tried and it didn't do it. So I don't know what's up.
Come on in.
All right. So what I wanted to do is, I should have brought my glasses too. So what, what this is, is a worksheet that every commission is doing for council. And it just has a little description of the commission. And then a little description of our recent accomplishments. So I took the liberty of just filling that in. If anybody wants to change that or edit that, you can tell me, tell me now. So any, any edits or changes to those first three boxes there in blue.
Spelling of ordinance.
Okay, we'll fix that.
And if we're gonna say community garden moved to Park Rec, should we also just add in there, develop a garden in the north end of town, right? Same time?
Yeah. So put down here, add that community garden and then move to Parks and Rec and encourage
Development of a new garden.
Yes, correct.
Patrick, what, what is the intention of project finance options? Is that where you can go get, you know, loans to do energy efficiency? Is that what you're talking about?
Also provide input on community education and project. So I took this directly from the mission statement. That's articulated in the, that was articulated in the word. And so, so I think, I believe that's what, what that was designed to do. So project finance options in terms of either city funding or grant funding or to help facilitate action, I think. Okay. Yeah. And we could maybe ask, add that.
Maybe.
Sorry about this, this spam call. Just say finance options.
Yeah, or sorry about that. I'm sorry. This is spam call. It may be just funding, the project finance options. Can you say funding options?
Sure.
And it just be clear. I think that's what you're talking about.
Yep.
Funding options.
Yep.
Project funding options. That, that's better.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on, on the first couple of boxes? All right. So what we've been asked to do is to identify two priorities that would go forward to council that are ongoing priorities or areas of focus. So things that we're doing now that, that they need to be aware of and would continue forward to continue to pay attention to. And then the second was new priority areas of focus. So, so new things that we think they should be thinking about for whatever reason, whether it's a new, new idea, whether it's a new program, whether it's a new requirement, et cetera. So, so those are the two categories of things. I asked if we can have, I'm gonna sit down here. I'm gonna ask, I asked if we could have three things and they said no. They said two. So two in each category. So I can't, I can't expand the list at all. So let me just run through the things that you guys identified earlier from our list. So fully implement SB 1383. The climate action, climate action in particular, the moving the roadmap forward. We talked about EV chargers, enhancing dedicated infrastructure for alternative forms of transportation. Continuing to advocate for train and bus, so mass transit options. Pilot bike share scooter program, past building ordinances, anticipate and take actions, take action to reduce water use.
Yeah.
Encourage fit for purpose uses of water too. So those are the kinds of things that you guys identified as important previously. So there, of that list, are there a couple of ongoing things that you think councils should be paying attention to over the next year?
Well, water is obviously a priority.
Right. I would, I would probably put that under new. I agree. And I would put that under new priorities because the city has not really been doing that much there.
I would agree with that assessment.
So I, you know, I, my pitches are underwater for the areas that I've been focusing on water use reduction. And then, you know, whether it's priority or not, whether it's on the list or not, they're going to see a whole bunch of building ordinances in the roadmap and, you know, requests for direction. So, you know, I don't know whether you want to include that here because it's already included also in the roadmap. And maybe you, you know, synthesize it as, as, you know, you know, climate action roadmap implementation. Maybe that's a way to sort of bring it all together without going into detail of building and EVs and all that stuff.
Right. That's, that sounds like a good approach to me is to kind of lump it into that. And because I think climate action is something that they are, that we have been concerned about for a while and taking that stuff with DCE was certainly a good indication of that. And then certainly doing more on that subject is something that we would encourage them to do and that they want to do more of. So, so maybe we put the climate action as one of the priorities up above.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's in the, that's in the first one. And you, I said, you can summarize it as climate action roadmap implementation.
Right. Okay.
I agree with David.
I agree. I agree with that too. That's what I was gonna say.
It's, it's a short, you know, you know, you have very few words that you can, this is all the, yeah, that's about as much as you're going to get.
Yes, they have a very small attention span too. Jake?
I would just say development and implement because we don't actually have a roadmap. So
That is great.
Before we implement it.
Great point.
Develop and implement climate action roadmap. Well, you have the document that's going to council, but
Development and implementation of climate action.
And there, I like keeping water out of it because with us looking, while there's going to be a co-benefit of not moving a water around that will reduce our GHG emissions related to our climate roadmap. Promoting things that wouldn't necessarily squarely come across because I'm not sure that we have the visibility in the inventory that Placeworks did for us about like how much we can actually assign energy consumption related to moving water around. Therefore, if we don't have something explicitly around us directing action toward water use consumption reduction, I think that gives us a better standing because it's like, these are other sustainability attributes that we should be focusing on beyond just carbon or GHG emissions.
That's a good point.
Yeah. It's not in the roadmap because for exactly the reason, just don't have good data on that, but there's so.
Randy?
Yeah. Not to change the subject, I just wanted to weigh in and just think under new priorities. And you had mentioned a couple of the transportation things. And if we can encapsulate all those holistically as a single, as opposed to one of those specific initiatives, that, that would be my vote for under the new priorities.
Okay. Yeah. So enhancing alternative forms of transportation and alternative, and I would say enhancing alternative and mass or shared forms of transportation, because that would get at the, the train and bus and all that kind of stuff.
I mean, that's already in the roadmap, Patrick. Some, at least to some degree. So there's a bit of overlap, but I agree.
I would agree there.
But, but I agree that that's a major priority. Be just because transportation is half of our GHG.
Perhaps it's more around something more tactical, like promoting funding of pilots to help us understand more about this because I feel like that could be a priority if they could help us get resources and funding to do studies. And a question I have is SB 1383 considered old or new business? Because it was in red on your list.
That is a good question. I think it would be considered new business because we've really just been gearing up for it up to this point.
Right.
Though it's really the implementation of that. So, so that would be. Yeah. So, so we have to make a decision. So is it water and SB 1383? Or, and so it sounds like we'll, we'll put maybe the transportation stuff up. So I think, yeah, so implementation of SB 1383.
Yeah. I mean, or Patrick, since you have a little bit of layers saying, maybe you put a development implementation of climate action roadmap, including transportation options.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's great. Including transportation options. I think it's a good one. Okay. Because that, that sort of puts it on their radar that, that transportation is a big deal.
Or we could mention it in the rationale, which we identify our five big buckets in our climate inventory that then would obviously speak to, okay, well, if we're going to be focusing on developing and implementing a climate roadmap, the rationale is, is that our biggest impacts are around transportation. So therefore we'll address transportation, we'll address energy consumption in buildings, we'll address landfills. And so we could, the rationale could be, why is this a priority? It's because in order for us to reach our targets, we have to address our five biggest contributors in our GHG inventory or something like that. And then there, it might seem cleaner to then say, for example, transportation options to address our energy or address our emissions related to energy.
It's
Uh, let's see, Don, I think you're next.
Yeah, actually, I would love for us to have somewhere in here, something where we're increasing council to, to increase the communication to the citizens about changing their behaviors, motivational, something or norm creation or something like that. And we've talked about it at various points and I, I would like to see council being leaders about, hey folks, we really got to do this.
So what would that look like?
Uh, you know, I'm not exactly sure.
So that's the kind of thing I think we want to avoid. I, I think that's the thing they want to avoid in this. I think they want specifics. Actions that they can take over the next year, projects. I don't, I don't disagree that that's important. I think they do that a lot right now.
Right.
But, yeah.
Okay.
You go, add it, it, Don, well, you could say rationale is not just to address the big contributors, but an opportunity for, you know, council to promote our climate action roadmap. So it becomes like,
Oh, okay. Yeah.
It, it's sort of like, it's a what and then a how, and then shows what their role would be. And so like, obviously we need them to promote it. Because if not promoting it, then there's only so much we can do in infrastructure or like behind the scenes, but you know, we need behaviors to change.
Well, the measure of success could be public change their behavior.
Right. Well, we would.
So, yeah. So how about this? So how about if it's development and implementation in the priority section, development, implementation of a climate action roadmap? Get rid of the including transportation part and, and just add and promote implementation efforts or promote behavior change or something like that.
Okay. And then put transportation in number two. I, I second that.
And then put transportation over here in rationale?
No, no.
Or down in, in the second?
Right.
Okay. All right. So promote. Promote.
And encourage local agencies to increase transportation options and promote their use.
Transportation. Yeah, but is that, is that ongoing? Because with only, the only thing we've been doing so far is EV. So that's
Yeah.
So I, I don't know. I mean, this is all embedded in the climate action roadmap. So I, I think we, that's our shot at the apple and, and Don, as we, Roy and I have been, you know, Don, Roy and I have been focusing on transportation and because it's all part of GHG. So I, it may be cleaner just to deal with all of that in, in, in the climate action roadmap because
Okay. So what, should we just go ahead and call out some of the big things up for the big five, like the transportation?
Buildings.
Building.
Largest that I know are transportation and buildings being both residential and then and, and commercial and industrial. And I don't remember what the other two are.
Yeah, transportation, building, energy use and
Solid waste.
I think what, maybe what
Table one in the inventory. Top one is transportation. Number two is residential buildings. Number three is commercial. Number four is water and wastewater and number five is solid waste.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would say water and wastewater and then solid waste and get rid of commercial.
Yeah. Yeah. You can, you can put residential and commercial building energy.
Yeah.
That's been because they're, you know, they're
But, all right. So, and then measures of success are greenhouse gas reductions, I think is the
And, and the nice thing about it is that's quantifiable.
Yep. Yep. All right. And so then let's focus on the transportation one. I think that probably gets us close. So I think, I, I like Jake, what you were kind of talking about to be a little more specific in terms of encourage alternative transportation use through pilots, through additional pilots and studies or something like that.
Yeah.
And research, I think, and additional research. Okay. And then rationale is that transportation is our biggest contributor. Is, is our biggest contributor to GHG emissions?
Yeah, it's almost like double the next one in line.
Say that again?
I said, it's, it, transportation is so large that it's like as equal to the next two contributor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. If we got rid of transportation, I think we would meet our, our, our 2050 goal or something like that. So just get rid of the cars. That's what I keep saying. Just get rid of them all. Okay. And then measure of success for that one, is it like maybe a successful pilot implementation or, or something like that? Or what do you think the measures of success are?
The closure of gas stations.
Or, or more accurately, as you actually get to make sure, and that's something that I recall a discussion. Oh, I think it was at the planning commission. It was either at the PC or city council discussion of Tower Market about requiring gas stations to have EV chargers. So that could be potentially a pilot program of, you know, while we're adding EVs, you know, putting them in the gas stations as well.
So far down the EV rabbit hole that I just don't, I can't even imagine that. Yeah, Jake?
I was gonna suggest that another part of the rationale is to encourage behavioral change around transportation options. Because I think that that's one of the pieces and also um look at alternative ways to encourage like or how like it's also thinking differently about how we designate our public space. So that they these are rationales, not the the measure of success would be number of pilots implemented. Um, if we could, those can be, and remember when Bird was telling us, like, they can also give us data around like a measure of success will be giving us better indications around where are people using this micro mobility so that we could understand how to scale it differently in the city as well. So it gives us directional insights on like, you know, how do we scale? Um, so measure of success would just be more primary data around um transportation choices.
Yeah, change changes in transportation choices.
Yeah, I mean, Sunline should be able to provide change, you know, not in increasing in their use. We should be able to look at reductions in registrations of F one fifties. Um, things like that.
Okay. All right. Yep.
Maybe add where it says changes in transportation choices. Like, do you mean options or the decisions that people?
Decisions, yeah.
Maybe, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so decisions.
Where's your baseline?
Well, so so I would see this playing out in terms of like ridership on buses. Increased maybe bike use downtown.
Know that no one's, no one's.
I don't know.
Counting bike use, that's.
A good question.
And so I I think that's part of the.
Would be part of the pilot. Line and then measure it. So so then we would do things to encourage behavioral change and then we would look to see did the change actually happen if we put in a protected bike lane with parklets along the side and created a more like um dazzling and appealing and inviting like sort of walkable cityscape and curb appeal and then then go in and measure like, oh, well, these things seem to encourage choices to ride bikes and then you could have a bike counter.
Or. Yeah, we can also do pedestrian counts, that kind of stuff. Okay, all right, um, are we okay with the first section there? Any other changes? All right, going once, going twice. All right, next section, new priority areas, water use reduction. Um, and so rationale is drought.
Mega drought.
Mega drought. And then measures of success would be, of course.
Where reduce water consumption by by both city and and residence slash businesses. We reduce water consumption.
Uh, by city and residents.
Well, and businesses. City residents and businesses.
Right? Um.
People.
All right, implementation of FC thirteen enhance alternative and shared for. So rationale state requirements.
Yes, the requirement.
Requirement and GHG emissions reduction.
Um, Patrick, going back to the first, you may want to uh include in uh in the first one, you can sort of include alliance with state GHG reduction goals in the rationale.
Reduction?
Yeah, the right, uh, going back to the first priority.
Okay.
With with you can put if you want to, it's just saying alliance with state GHG reduction goals. Yeah, there is that reference above that sort of saying state and local mandates. They're not necessarily mandates, but they are strong goals.
Okay.
Align to.
Align with state goals?
No, just say.
Yeah, address and align with state goals or something.
Do another sentence.
Okay.
Align.
Align with state GHG reduction policy or goals, whatever.
Policies and goals.
That's perfect, yeah. That works. One one two L too many.
All right, and implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three, I think our our measure of success there is ordinance. Or ordinance and um ordinance in place. Um, service to all residents and businesses. That would be by the end of next year.
Reduction targets, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Jake's comment is fine.
Where's where's Jase?
Uh, is in the chat, which try not to do that, but aligned with state GHG reduction. Uh, aligned with state GHG reduction targets. Jake, that's fine.
Okay.
So but going back to that that section.
Okay.
Yep, that works.
All right, any other changes? Going once, going twice.
We need to. I don't know, sure what.
This is like speed dating with priorities.
Yeah, you can. You know, you you can, you know, drought, reduce water allocation from, you know, we.
Yeah.
From whatever you can.
Yeah, reduced water comma comma.
Drought, reduce water allocation from uh, you know.
Water project.
From swell, it's more complicated than that.
Yeah, right.
Reduce water, reduce with reduced water allocation.
Might maybe frame it as a water security in the face of climate change, but more kind of positive.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I love that. Water security in the face of climate change.
Including drought and reduced allocation.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a climate change. It is definitely a climate change adaptation measure. So thank you, Alex. That's a great comment.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, anything else? Good work. Yes, we're gonna go down there. Um, so activities that could be deferred or referred or eliminated. So community garden was one of the ones that jumped to my mind in terms of passing it off to Parks and Rec. It just makes more sense there. Anything else you think? Uh, we could also, we talked a lot about health and wellness being kind of a Parks and Rec thing. Maybe include that. So community garden and.
Here.
Uh, no.
Oh, gotcha.
Up there. Let's see.
And Patrick, I would suggest adding as Roy's point is moving sustainable economy to economic development.
Great point.
Would kick that can over to them.
Jay brought a thank you.
That's right.
Is there a public health department or is it different now? All kind of falls under Parks and Rec.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so we'll add health and wellness there to 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 pass off to them. Um, and then the other one, uh, and then I think that's economic development is good. Anything else for the pass off?
I wonder, is this the space where we could emphasize the importance of the open space protection and restoration or did we decide to keep that in sustainability?
Uh, I think we're keeping that. Um, and it again, it sort of aligns with the general plan too. So so I think it's us and them.
Okay.
We're also dropping livable neighborhoods.
Yeah. Uh, we weren't really doing anything on that, so it's not really an activity.
Yeah.
We were trying to do stuff with sustainable economy, but failing.
Okay.
Um, Jake, did you have your hand up too? Okay, all right, um. All right, so we'll go back and put health and wellness up there, but then the next one was critical organizational changes needed. So this is one that Roy and I had talked about and it came up in the lead by example. So engaging other departments more formally in sustainability efforts. I think that's something organizationally we need to work on to kind of spread the spread the joy of sustainability across the organization. So that's when we identified. Any other sort of organizational changes you feel we need to include in here for for council's attention?
I mean, just a general coordination, it's more than just engage. It's coordination where I'm, you know, where, you know, uh, there are things that the building department is supposed to be doing and they're not doing and they're not really. You know, the i- it's sort of a, it's a general coordination across in particular, planning, building and sustainability. You're all in one department and sometimes I get the feeling that your three remain three separate, you know, fiefdoms. So I don't know how you put that.
So I think we could do that, just say especially coordination among um development services.
Yes, that that, you know, a polite way of saying um, that those you 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 folks need to talk with each other a lot more than 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 it's happening.
Yep.
Um, well, is there a way to be a bit more explicit, like, because I feel like that, so. Um, what I was thinking about was perhaps there even being something more formal around a task force around execution of the city's climate strategy where it empowers individuals from each of these different groups to have a stake in the game. So I don't know if there is a formal like climate steering committee, but that would be something or developing a task forces. And then in addition to that, I don't know if that's possible, if that's what we want to encourage or if that's even within council's domain. The other piece would be when we say about, you know, coordination, perhaps it's more explicit there where it's around like um, embedding it into the overall like those the mission of each of these individual groups that there's a there's a shift in focus and purpose and mission that's more intentional as opposed to it like, oh, I'm doing this and now I have to think about it this way. So because that way, I think if everyone has a responsibility to lead the city in a sustainable way that that encourages those, it enables those departments to, you know, mean our sustainability efforts. So I think, in my opinion, a critical organizational change is to reevaluate, you know, um, mission and titles of divisions such that they explicitly state a mission and duty to achieving climate result, like something that's around.
So um, uh, I think, uh, so revisit or reimagine organizational mission. I think.
You can reimagine the entire development services department as having a main focus on sustainability and climate adaptation.
Yeah, I like that.
Right. Mission, yeah.
Reimagine development services department so that it's the sustainable development services department.
There you go, develop reimagine development services as.
That's top of mind for everybody and not just your, you know, the office of sustainability.
Right.
Uh, thank you, Jake, for your your input because it's.
Is that what you envisioned?
Yeah, to um focused on, I I think focus, I I I like the sort of reframe of focused on climate action or something like that. Because that that really, almost everything that we talked about. Could be framed in terms of climate action and most of what we interact with them on are climate related things.
Yes.
So whether it's parks and rec in terms of preserving open space, whether it's building planning in terms of um, you know, EV charging, infrastructure and engineering with whatever.
Uh, reimagine all city departments as focused on climate action?
I I think, I mean, I think they're they all have a role. I mean, we work with all of them, right?
I.
But I think David's point was specifically for development services to refocus as sustainable development services, not to say all city agency can do the same.
I think you can leave that for so as sustainable development services focused on climate action.
Yeah.
Reimagine sustainable?
No.
Nope.
Development Services Department as Sustainable Development Services. Reimagine Development Services Department as Sustainable Development Services focused on climate action. We're focused on climate adaptation, you know, however you want to.
I I think climate action is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I I I I think the climate action can be misinterpreted as as being weaker than needing to address climate change. So I would like that last two words to be a little beefier. I'm not quite sure.
Well, focused on climate change adaptation, you know, mitigate adaptation and mitigation.
Mitigation.
Okay.
And that's actually consistent with words that I dropped into the general plan priorities last year that hopefully one day we'll get to city council.
All right, so any other things other than that in terms of um, anything staffing wise, realignment, funding?
Well, I'm not sure whether it's process or here, but then there's all question of hiring a bunch, as Christie mentioned, is hiring a bunch more people um, to do all of this work.
Right.
Um, because I'm carrying a lot of that, you know, R and D role right now.
So I would I would add in here, I would add it here to say um hire additional, hire at least two additional staff members.
Yeah. And consultants on an as needed and 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 consultants on an as needed basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I had suggested, you know, that the meager staff members, but um, this is an area and I've spoken with Katie about this, but um, uh, the sparks, the uh, I forgot what the name of it is.
I, we need them to be staff.
Okay, all right.
Um, so, all right, uh, then the last topic is process improvements. And so this was more about um, how the you, the group interacts with council or how things get done. Uh, things like that. So we had talked before a long time ago about liaison roles on council or beefing that up, anything like that.
Yeah, we we definitely need to be, obviously, it's been a challenge the last year and a half. Um, but you know, we need more direct input. Uh, you know, I'm going to council with a whole bunch of, you know, proposals, but I don't really have any sort of preliminary feedback the way that I think you you did and 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 Roy and Rob that you did on the foodware ordinance. So um, it would be helpful that we, that's more institutionalized.
Yeah.
And and I and I had it when I was working on what became the solar policy. I worked very closely with Jeff and JR and then Lisa.
So is there is there a model that makes sense to do that? Like, is there something specific we could say to them, like meet regularly with subcommittees or I don't know, have joint meeting once a year?
I mean, there there probably should be in terms of when we're when we're when we're thinking about an ordinance, it's probably, you know, I I I think it's good that you know, we're a major city policy that, you know, that 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 that's a liaison role, whether it's liaison or can whatever, but we should sort of get some preliminary, you know, feedback for major policy um, proposals before they hit all five council members without a single one of them seeing it.
Right.
Which is.
Get, um, I think you leave the period. Uh, get input.
From one or two council members liaison, council liaison and you can.
Yeah, council subcommittees or liaisons.
Yeah, on policy proposals.
Yeah.
On major policy proposals.
Major policy proposals. Prior to bringing them to council.
Yeah. I I certainly benefited from that on the solar and you guys probably did also on foodware. And I know Carl, you've been talking with council member corps on smoking, so.
Yep.
So I think that should be institutionalized.
Yeah. All right, anything else on process improvements with council? Okay.
Uh, I I had one thing going back up to critical organizational changes.
Yep.
Do you need to say something about organizational changes that would be needed if parks and recreation picked up more of the things that we suggested they should pick up?
That's their task to figure out.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I think that they have a a pretty good infrastructure. Quite honestly, there are one of the organizations that I feel like is pretty well equipped to take on stuff like that.
Okay, all right.
I could be kidding myself just because I want them to take those things on, but so.
So this is gonna be dot commission edits or commission input?
Uh, that's fine.
One um question, if there's, do you think that in process improvements, if there's um, something that would be considered with respect to, or maybe it's already addressed in the previous change. something that would be considered with respect to, or maybe it's already addressed in the previous change, organizational change, but like how sustainability be front and center in the general plan so that like for the different points of connection, like the active transportation plan and looking at different mode shares, et cetera, like there's something about intentionality between sustainability and master planning or the general plan? Or do you think that is covered in the previous?
That that was the intent behind that original, well, originally in combining and putting sustainability within development services, that was one of the key factors that they wanted to cover. So so I think I I I don't think that has happened, but I do think that was the intent. So I think maybe maybe we can add one to the end of that that says improve integration of sustainability into general plan.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
At least that way it'll feel less like we're trying to retrofit it into the overall planning process of the community.
Right. Patrick, under process improvements, maybe it's important, but 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 obviously we sustainability needs to be on at least partially under the the general fund as opposed to the sustainability and recycling because we're we're obviously resource constrained. So you know, dedicated or, you know, I almost say dedicated that, you know, funding, you know, funding from general plan because.
So actually, there I think there's a different way to address that there. What we've been talking about internally is actually just making. Well, there's two two things. So one is they, under the changes with SB 1383, I think part of that was to get all of the general, all of the money that comes from the franchise to us so that we could find fully fund the program and not have to worry about spending down our bank account.
Yeah.
But then the other thing is that I do think there is a need to integrate larger projects, larger sustainability projects into the general plan, a general fund process.
Well, like, yeah, the water, the entire water upgrade.
Exactly, like the water upgrade. We can't do that. That that's got to be part of a bigger capital improvement project. So I would say integrate integrate larger sustainability project funding into funding into general into general fund allocations.
Yeah.
All right. All right, anything else?
That, yeah, that hits my button there. Thank you.
Last call. I'm hitting send.
Dinner time, let's go.
Yes, exactly. All right, thank you all. I think we're done for tonight. We'll take and and take the feedback from the other part of the process that we talked about and work that into our future discussions about the planning document and we will forward that last document that we worked on over to city council or to Cindy Karen, so she can forward to city council. And what they plan to do with that is to integrate that into their discussions of priorities that will happen in November. So that's a plan. All right, thank you all. Appreciate this and appreciate your input and for sticking in there with us through this evening. And look, it's my office. So. All right.
I like your kitty.
Right.
The kitty made me smile a couple times.
I can't, I they 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 interfere with Zoom always. So anyway.
All right, thanks, everybody, and have a great night and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, it worked well.
Everyone. Great.